Good morning, everyone. We might be a couple of minutes early, but I think everyone is in attendance. This meeting of the Mobile County Commission is now called to order. If you would please stand. This morning, we have given our invocation Pastor Brad Sullivan from Serge Church on Dawes Road in Mobile. Welcome Pastor Sullivan, we're so happy to have you.
Thank you, God bless you guys. It's a joy to be here today and just pray blessings on everyone here in attendance. Let's go to God in prayer. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. You've given us, for this is the day that you have made, and we rejoice and we're glad in it. Lord, I thank you for the leaders of the Mobile County Commission and the people they represent, the plans made, the laws passed here impact our county. I pray that these men and women will seek your wisdom above all things. The Bible declares that the fear of the Lord is the beginning of wisdom, and let there be a holy fear in Revens for you and your will in this place that will release your wisdom to ensure peace and prosperity. Lord, I pray that these leaders will stand for righteousness. You said in your word that righteousness exalts a nation, but sin is a reproach to any people. Let these men and women always choose doing what is right over doing what is expedient. I also pray that you will give them the strength and the courage to stand, Lord, against the pressures that would seek to sway them. Lord, you warned us in Scripture, woe to those who call good evil and evil good. I pray you will usher in a new era of peace and prosperity that flows from righteous leadership, and let it start today with these leaders. Father God, we beseech you on behalf of our city and county, our society is in desperate need of restoration, and I fervently pray that you will pour out your spirit and revive us again. Do a great work in this county and city. Lord, send a wave of revival and prosperity to Mobile. I ask you for the increase of jobs and businesses, corporations, and industry, and also ask, Lord, for the churches to flourish and to have greater impact in our communities. Now, God, move in the heart and life of every leader here today. I pray your hand of protection be upon them, may their hearts be open to your leadership and guidance as they lead and guide our county. Thank you for their sacrifice and for their service. I pray this in the powerful and the mighty name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, please be seated. Thank you very much Pastor. This morning, we have some special guests with us. We have students from two of our Mobile County Public School Middle Schools, and from Sims Middle School this morning, we have their cheer team. The cheer team is here with their coaches, Kelly Evans, Randy Evans, and Kylie, or Randy is, who is here today? Kylie. But Randy, your daughter, is also a coach as well. Okay, and what, we have 15 cheerleaders. They have won the national championship in junior high non-building category from the Universal Cheerleaders Association. They won it in February of this year, and they won it at Walt Disney World Resort in Orlando, Florida. And if you had an opportunity to watch these young ladies going through some of their cheer routines right before the meeting, you can certainly understand why they won this award. They are absolutely wonderful, and we're proud to recognize them today. Ladies, would you come down and join us? And we have some certificates to present. Yeah, you can step back a little bit, because I'm gonna make some presentations. But first, I am going to recognize the coaches. The head coach is Kelly Evans, and we appreciate you being here today and bringing these, your cheer team, thank you so much for the great job that you do. Obviously, they have to have good instruction and to be a national championship winning team here, and so we congratulate you on the great job that you've done. And Kylie, and I have one for Randy as well. So this is all in the family, this talent runs in the family here. Wow, great job. Okay, ladies, as I call your name, if you'll just, it may be better if I turn around. If you'll just raise your hand so that I can recognize you. We have Destiny Buckley. Okay, Destiny. And this actually is, says earned, that you've earned special recognition, and it's hereby granted a certificate of award representing Sims Middle School in the UCA National High School Cheerleading Championship win. Now, is this middle school or high school? Middle school, so we may have to reprint these, right? Oh, it's a high school competition. Wow, okay. So it's high school and middle school, and you're the winners. So that's extra wow. Only, I'm gonna let you know.
We're the only junior high school in the state of Alabama to win a national championship, so they've done a wonderful job, we're proud.
That deserves an applause. Okay. Olivia Clark. Lauren Curtis. Allison Davis. Kylie Hofflich. Reagan Kelly. Taylor Lawson. Melody McLean. Kalen Orr. Brayden Ott. Rayleigh Perry. Casey Pritchett. Rosalie Reed. Coley Stedman. Addison Stringer. Okay, did we get everybody? Wonderful. Would anything else you'd like to add?
I'm super proud of these girls and the hard work and dedication that they put forth this season. This is our last time together as our school year ends, and these kids, half of them will go to high school, the others I get to keep. So Kylie and I and Randy were just very, very proud for their regional win, their state win, and their national championship this season. That's correct.
How many of you are gonna continue and cheer at the next level? Some undecided ones? Well, you certainly can, because you're all very talented, you did a great job. Okay, ladies, we're gonna get a picture or two? Okay. Oh, that'll work.
is a group of students who won the superior and best-in-class rating in the strings competition at the Panama City Beach Music Festival. And this was last week? Okay, two weeks ago. So we're excited to have them here today with us, and we have certificates for each of you. To Kristen Austin. And Trill Pritchett, did I say that right? Markala Scott. And for their band instructor, Barbara McMillan.
So it was on April 29th in Panama City Beach Music Festival, both bands and strings ensembles compete. So both my band, concert band, as well as the strings ensemble competed. I don't know too much more information, but it was, I want to say about 10 to 15 ensembles that competed, so we enjoyed it, and we look forward to going next year.
And we're especially proud to have them, because the commission helped them get their string instruments, and now they've gotten their instruments and they've gone off and are doing great things with them. Thank you so much for coming.
Well, great job, great having you here today. Keep up the work, wonderful work you're doing. I love strings.
Oh, and for the parents who came to make this day possible, thank you so much for bringing your children down.
Okay, do we have any speakers signed in this morning?
We do. We have three speakers signed in this morning. Two of them are signed in to speak about the same topic, so if you don't mind, I'll take them out of order so they can group them. Ms. Diane Watson is here to speak on Walker Road subdivision. It was removed, it was pulled from the agenda today, but they would like to share their sentiments about it. So Ms. Watson?
Okay, Ms. Walker, if you'll give us your name and address for the record, please, when you come to the lectern.
Diane Watson, and I'm 6485 Belle Valley Drive in Theodore. We bought property in Irvington in 2009, my husband and I, nine acres. And eventually, we subdivided, we gave our daughter three acres, our son three acres, and we have three acres. Our son sold three acres that should never have gone through, because it's a plat of family. It could not be built on by anybody but the family, and it had to be at least five acres, unless you had to be family to do it. So Ms. Bosa bought this property, wants to put a subdivision on it, brought a trailer in in January, and it's been sitting there since. But there's restrictions, and one of the restrictions is no mobile homes in this area. And you have to have five acres, and that's Mobile County Commission that has said that. So I just wanted to reiterate that it's not legal, what he's trying to do. And it's showing that it's rejected at this time, but I just wanted to let you know that it truly is, should not be able to be done.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Watson. I think we'll hear the other speakers, and then I will look to engineering, if, which item are we talking about that was pulled?
Oh, it's 29. I apologize, I was misinformed on that. It is number 29, I apologize.
Okay.
Our second speaker on that same topic is Mr. John Cannon.
Mr. Hammond, if you'll give us your address?
2750 Belle Fontaine Boulevard, Theodore. I originally developed this subdivision, and you know, it went way back. We did it by the rules of the Mobile County subdivision rules. And you know, I just, my only comment is that, you know, we went by the rules, and the people in the subdivision are going by the rules. This would be an exception to the rule, which I understand is an illegal subdivision, according to Mobile County Engineering, and you know, I just don't think it would be fair to everybody else involved, even myself, if we, you know, if y'all approved an illegal subdivision in the subdivision. It's my only comment.
Thank you.
Those are the only two on that topic.
Okay. I'll look at engineering, Mr. Kegley, or Matthew, is, with someone? Because I see that it is recommended for rejection.
Commissioners, we had a meeting with the gentleman who bought the property and with his attorney this morning, and they requested to withdraw it at this time. We gave them a couple paths forward, and they're going to look into those more fully before coming back and asking for us to reconsider.
So vote to reject it today, based on?
No, vote to, they're just gonna withdraw the petition, so there'll be no vote today.
No vote today, okay. Or remove it from the agenda. Any more speakers?
We have one more speaker, Mr. Eddie Erby, and he's, he listed his organization as All Britain Place. He would like to speak about law enforcement assistance, and I believe he also has a, something for Commissioner Ludgood.
Morning. My name is Eddie Erby Jr., I'm 1116 Richard Road, 36618, and I don't know if I'm in the right place or not, but if I'm not, instruct me to. We are having a heck of a time on Moffett Road between I-65 and University Boulevard. There was a wreck out there every week in the month. We've gone to the police department, we've gone to the public safety people, and all they tell us that they don't have enough people to patrol the area properly. Well, that's fine, we see the sheriff cars up and down the road all the time, a lot of people tell us it's a federal highway. We've gone, the next deal is to go to the state troopers, but we'd like to, if you would, to work with the sheriff department to see if we can get a little local help to help the police. They did the same thing for Pritchett several years ago, when things got out of hand out there, he went out there, he helped with the traffic and everything else. Even the children have to run for their lives on the school buses. Three days ago, there was a bus stop at, from my house, that subdivision, on Gene Drive and Moffett Road. The bus driver had to lean in on the horn, because people were going around that bus and past the bus, even though the kids were getting on the other side. So we'd like any help you can give us, talking to the sheriff, I know all those guys, I've trained with some of those guys, and we just need a little help. My subdivision is, consists of five nurses that work 12 to 15 hours a day. I have the widow of George Patton drivers standing at the end of my subdivision, Mrs. Bradshaw. I have two widows standing there, whose husbands flew B-29 bombers in World War II, they were escorted by the Tuskegee Airmen. So they don't even go out on Moffett Road anymore because of the traffic. So we appreciate any help. The other one is, I'd like to present something to Ms. Commissioner Ludgood. This is about a program, and all of you are invited, on 6 June of this year, which is D-Day, we have the French government coming here, they're bringing the BBC with them, the History Challenge, the Smithsonian, and other major international news media. We have one man in that group, Mr. Robert Curtis Andre of Mount Vernon. He is going to be decorated with the Legion of Honor, and he's going to be knighted at the same time by the French government. This is as a result of a tank battle in 1943 that we've been trying to get him to get that award. So I've got a question for Commissioner Ludgood, but the rest of you are invited also. Is there be at the downtown library, 2 o'clock on 6 June, D-Day, 2022. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Erby, and we appreciate you sharing your concerns with us. We're happy to always get in touch with the sheriff's department and ask for their help and support and additional monitoring wherever they are willing to go and within their jurisdiction. And I think the whole county is jurisdiction, so, and I'll look at you, because...
They have options of, like you were talking about in Pritchett, and I guess they look at me, because I worked at the sheriff's office for 23 years, so. But what we'll do is, we have grant opportunities that we get federal money, and I'll have a conversation with the sheriff today, with y'all's permission, about taking some of these grant opportunities and setting up some radar and things in that area. And you said between 65 and University on Highway 98, correct?
We'll certainly do everything we can to help address problems like that. Thank you. Hey, I think we are, is that it?
No more speakers. I do have a note that the string students will be performing after the meeting.
Okay, good, good.
In Adrian.
Very good. Okay, Eddie, I think it's your turn. We'll get started.
Number one, approve the minutes of the regular meeting of April 21st, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Number two, approve a list of claims.
So moved.
Second.
Three, approve application for special events retail alcohol license submitted by Eminence Promotions for Southeastern Combat Championship 7701 Hit Road, Mobile, Alabama, 36695.
So moved.
Second.
Number four and five were voted at the conference. Number six, approve easement agreement with Alabama Power Company to install underground service for renovation of property at 355 North Ann Street, Mobile, Alabama, 36603, and authorize president of the commission to execute the agreement.
So moved.
Second.
Number seven, approve resubmission of the application to fiscal year 2020 Economic Development Administration Public Works and Economic Adjustment Assistance Programs, including Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act, funding the Department of Commerce Economic Development Administration in an amount of up to $793,000 for the Franklin House project at 355 North Ann Street, Mobile, Alabama, 36603.
So moved.
Second.
Eight, authorize advertising and receiving bids for roof maintenance of, or replacement of various county facilities.
So moved.
Second.
Nine, approve appropriation contract with Ross Rosa, a lot Historic Preservation Society, in the amount of $50,000 from District One funds for the Lot House Restoration Project.
So moved.
Second.
Ten, approve appropriation contract with South Alabama Volunteer Lawyers Program in the amount of $5,000 from District One funds for general operating expenses.
So moved.
Second.
Eleven, approve annual performance evaluation rating for Glenn L. Hodge County Administrator.
So moved.
Second.
Twelve, approve annual performance evaluation rating for W. Brian Kegley II County Engineer.
So moved.
Second.
Thirteen, approve annual performance evaluation rating for Richard Mitchell, Public Works Director, Chief Engineer of the Division of Public Roads.
So moved.
Second.
Number fourteen, approve appropriation contract with the Conservation Fund in the amount of $20,000 from District One funds for the preservation of Blakenly Bluff property in Fort Blakenly.
I realize there was some discussion and questions asked at the conference meeting, Commissioner Ludgood, you weren't there, but I think there was some angst as to whether or not it was in Baldwin County, and I know that it was your wish to do this, and I was just wondering if you could give a little background and information, because typically, you know, we don't fund things, projects outside of the...
So this is actually in a state park, Fort Blakenly State Park, and what the Conservation Fund is doing is trying to preserve a site that was the site of a Civil War battle that involved African-American troops. And they, they've already obtained the Conservation easement and deeded it to the University of South Alabama. The University of South Alabama is the custodian of the project. I think it's just a good project for our area, I think it's a part of our history, part of our heritage that we need to preserve, and it really went, to be perfectly honest, when I first did this, I confused Blakenly Bluff with Fort Morgan. Yeah, that's, that's, because I knew Fort Morgan at a portion that was in Mobile County. But when it was pointed out to me that this was Baldwin County, for me, the importance of the project really outweighed that it was not actually on ground in Mobile County. So I was approached by an old college classmate of mine who was involved with the fundraising for the project, because I live in South Alabama. I'm pretty sure that's why he reached out to me. So that's how we end up here, you know, I understand the concern, but for me, this is inside a state park, this is not a Baldwin County park, this is a state park where this land is, and so.
Well, I'll make the motion.
Second.
And just for public record, I'm a no vote, no.
Fifteen, approve professional services contract with Matthews Educational Consultant in the amount of $25,000 from District One funds for the development and pre-production of a dramatic musical.
So moved.
Second.
Sixteen, authorize cooperative agreements with municipalities that wish to join the HUD entitlement Mobile Urban County, and authorize the county commission president to execute all documents.
So moved.
Second.
Seventeen, authorize county commission president to seek the renewal of the urban county entitlement status with the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development.
So moved.
Second.
Eighteen, authorize county commission president to apply as an urban county for community development block grant entitlement programs, home investment partnership program, and other U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development grants.
So moved.
Second.
Nineteen, authorize advertising and receiving bids for Chickasawogue Park campground improvements.
So moved.
Second.
Twenty, consider... Twenty, consider taking the following action on bids.
So moved.
Second.
Twenty-one, adopt sole source resolution approving the renewal of software maintenance contract with Tracker Software Corporation for Pub Works in the amount of $22,934 for the Public Works Department.
So moved.
Second.
Twenty-two, approve 36-month lease agreement with Sharp Electronics Corporation under the current state of Alabama contract for one Sharp copier in the amount of $134.94 per month for Camp One supply room and one Sharp copier in the amount of $220.70 per month for Grants Department.
So moved.
Second.
Twenty-three, approve application for Lounge Retail Liquor Class II Alcohol License submitted by Tradevi for West Mobile Liquor, 2502 Schillinger Road South, Suite 7, Mobile, Alabama, 36695.
So moved.
Second.
Twenty-four, award bid to C. Thornton for Swedtown Road Drainage Improvements and Resurfacing for their low bid with alternate number one for the total amount of $2,123,770.80.
So moved.
Second.
Twenty-five, adopt resolution consenting to the annexation of a portion of the following public streets, Silver Pine Road, Stone Pine Drive South, bounded by the territories annexed by the City of Sims, Alabama pursuant to city ordinance numbers 2019-06, 2022-05, 2022-07, and 2022-08.
So moved.
Second.
Twenty-six, approve license agreement with Verizon Wireless for construction, maintenance, and operation of small wireless facilities in Mobile County rights of way.
So moved.
Second.
Twenty-seven, authorize acquisition of property and acceptance of right-of-way deed from the following property owner.
So moved.
Second.
Twenty-eight.
Can I interrupt you for a second? Can we go back to 26 for just a second? I think there was a lady here who spoke Thursday, and, um, she was referred to as another office. Was she satisfied, Brian?
Yes, so she came up and, and visited with us for about five, 10 minutes, and we were able to provide her what you wanted.
Thank you.
Twenty-eight, approve right-of-way and/or easement agreement for Tracks One and Two in the total amount of $490 for Holly Point Drive South and others, grade drain, basin paved.
So moved.
Second.
Number 29 was, was withdrawn. Number 30 was voted at the conference. Number 31, approve setting the following speed limits as listed below for roads, segments of roads and subdivision streets, half-mile road, 45 miles an hour from Lauryn Dean Road, Bellengrave, to 1,500 feet east of Irvington-Balabatri Highway.
So moved.
Second.
Number 32, approve agreement for relocation of utility facilities in conflict with proposed roadway improvements with LeMoyne Water System for Creola Axis Loop Road North, resurfacing, restoration, and rehabilitation.
So moved.
Second.
Number 33, approve final plat of Creekside Estates Phase Two and accept road rights of way as shown on the subdivision plat for the following streets, and accept the roads in this subdivision for maintenance by Mobile County together with drainage system as it affects said roads, and accept the warranty deed for the rights of way indicated on this plat.
So moved.
Second.
We're, okay. So moved. No, I was just looking for a head nod from Brian to make sure that we got something squared away on that, and he said we did.
I see him nod.
All right. Number 34 is add-on number one. Approve reappointment of Brian Sutherland to the Board of Directors of the Dolphin Island Water and Sewer Authority with the term to expire on Mar, March 1st, 2026. This appointment is intended to fill the unexpired term of Howard Fleming, who recently resigned his position.
So moved.
Second.
Add-on number two is to authorize letter of support from the Alabama Department of Transport, to, for the Alabama Department of Transportation, mega grant application for the Mobile River Bridge and Bayway Project.
So moved.
Second. Second.
And, and this, this authorizes Aldot to submit the grant. It could be a fairly substantial amount of money and another means of helping get the bridge paid for. Um, but the letter that was submitted this morning, and it will go to John Cooper, the director, um, was written in the singular, but we will change, basically change the verbiage to indicate that it's from the entire commission.
Add-on number three, approve allowing verbiage to be included in Mobile County Commission Public Works contracts for road improvement projects, bridge improvement projects, and other related public works projects pertaining to the sales and use tax exemptions. Bidders on Mobile County public works projects will be required to include the applicable sales and use tax exemptions in their bid prices for construction materials that become a part of the project and state on their bid proposal immediately below the base, total base bid price, the anticipated tax savings in accord with Act 2021-372, effective May 9th, 2022.
Brian, could you just explain briefly what, what that does and, and how it may save the county some money?
Yes, Commissioner, there was a, uh, a law passed last year authorizing the sales and use tax exemptions on municipal and county, uh, projects, um, depending upon where the project is located. If it's outside of any police jurisdictions, it would basically be about a 8% I believe sale tax. And this gives the contractors an opportunity to pass a portion or all at their discretion of this sales and use tax exemptions on our projects in their bid license. So it's a potential for us to save a significant amount of money on a lot of our projects.
Good deal.
So moved.
Second.
All right. The next item is commission announcements and/or comments.
Uh, well, I have a congratulations, um, for Commissioner Ludgood. I understand that she was the commencement speaker this weekend at Spring Hill College for their graduation and was awarded an honorary doctorate. So congratulations. You do us proud.
Dr. Ludgood.
What's that?
Dr. Ludgood.
Shall we call you Dr. Lud?
Do you want to call you a commissioner or a doctor?
She has a doctorate already because she has a doctor of jurisprudence, correct? But she doesn't make us call her doctor, though. Okay, is that it? Is that everything we got today?
That's it.
Okay. Well, then.
Final item, approve request for motion to adjourn until May 23rd, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Have a great afternoon.
And be sure to come outside, oh, there, in here on String.
I bet they're out there playing.
Okay.
Or starting to.